Thank you, everybody, and welcome to the Carlisle Board of Selectmen meeting Thursday, March 7, 2019. I'm going to call the meeting order now at 7:05 or sometime just after 7:00. Today's agenda is specific to one topic, and that's interviewing for the new Fire Chief. And we have two candidates that we're going to be interviewing, Colin Shea and Brian There were three, but one candidate withdrew. So this is the process. There are cards and pens in the back. If you would like to have us considering asking a question, if you could just fill that out and give it to Tim. If you could do it soon, that would be great because we want to have an opportunity to ask both candidates all of the questions. Not to say that every candidate will absolutely be asked the same question because some answers may lead to follow-ups and so, you know, there may be variation in some of the questions, but the core questions, we want to be consistent across both of the candidates. After the Board of Selectmen do the interviews, I will open up the floor for people to make comments. We will probably talk a little bit or a bit about it, but we won't be making a decision tonight. Our next Board of Selectmen meeting is just on Tuesday. And recognizing that some people may not want to get up and speak publicly but may want to make a statement afterwards, we'll allow, you know, we'll collect anybody's comments via email, just send them to Tim, and then we'll have those when we do make the decision on Tuesday night. So with that, unless there are any questions, it's unusual, we have all this much participation. So does anybody have any questions about the process? Yes?
There's still time to write an email form.
With an opinion.
Okay.
Yes, until Tuesday.
And you can always send hate mail to Nathan.
You're missing a fun night.
Any other questions? We're not going to have public input or anything like we normally do at the beginning of the Board of Selectmen meeting because this is just purely about the interview of the now Okay, so I have already received via email some questions. The questions that, and some of those questions I will be asking, but some of those questions are also very similar to our already prepared questions. So, you know, that question, the gist of the question will be asked, maybe just not using the exact same words that you submitted, but we will get to the majority of the questions that were already submitted in email. And I think we have two here which we will review. Okay, with that, anybody on the board have any questions?
Yes.
All right. Well, so I think just at first, I'm not sure, you know, how much we went into this in the last one, but these two candidates, there were three candidates, are the result of a lot of hard and long work by the Fire Chief Search Committee. That consisted of Alan as a Selectmen representative, myself, Police Chief John Fisher, the Deputy Fire Chief Bert Rubenstein, and firefighter Matt Hurwick, and Mark Way, Carlisle resident, and Tim Goddard, our town administrator. We met over several months, engaged a consulting company to help us with the recruitment efforts, to help us with the assessing efforts, and came to this conclusion, sorry, you know, it's a long process. Sometimes things are even a longer process when you're trying to get people who are volunteering their time to be able to meet all at the same time and they have jobs and everything, or they work in town and they have other jobs. And I just really want to thank that group for all the effort that they put in and, you know, some full-day assessments. And, you know, I think that in the end, we came out with a great group of candidates. And thank you all very much for your efforts. Okay, with that said, Tim, we're going to start off with Colin Shea.
I'll just interview him from here. This is Yale.
Hello again.
Nice to meet you. I'm shaking my hand, Mr. Kissinger, but I think it's a little far. Yes.
Oh, you have a question?
No, no.
Okay, so what we're going to do as the Selectmen is, in your packet, you have a list of questions.
Yes.
And I'll start off and we'll just round robin through. You don't have to ask a question here. If something else comes up, feel free to ask your own question before a follow-up question. But if you're missing a question or wondering a question.
Okay. Oh, so that's what the purpose of that is. Gotcha, 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 gotcha.
And these questions you have heard before.
Well, at least these. I'm going to throw some trick ones in here.
Welcome and thank you for coming again.
Thank you for having me.
It's a pleasure to see you again. So, welcome to the Carlisle Board of Selectmen. We've met. My name is Nathan Brown. I'm the Chair. Over here, calling in from Florida where it's nice and warm and sunset, is Kerry Kissinger. We have Kate Reed, Lucas Galillo. Kate Reed is the Vice Chair, Lucas Galillo, and Alan Lewis. We have also met.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I'm going to start off, just to kick it off and just to give everybody kind of a little bit of background about you. Could you take a few minutes to introduce yourself, explain your experience, how you heard about this role, and any education or certifications that would apply to the role you're in?
So there's a lot of parts to this, so if I miss something, let me know. So I've been in the fire service for 20 years now. I started as a college student at St. Michael's College. It's the busiest fire and EMS collegiate service in the country. And I currently work full-time as the Training Lieutenant for the Hollis, New Hampshire Fire Department. And in addition to that, I also work as a on-call lieutenant for the Brookline Fire Department where my wife and I live currently. In addition to being in the fire service and responding to calls, I also teach part-time for the New Hampshire State Fire Academy, which prior to taking the Lieutenant's position, which is a daytime position, in addition to teaching part-time, I also worked as a program coordinator for the instructor program throughout the entire state of New Hampshire. I have a bachelor's degree in Religious Studies from St. Michael's College, which oddly enough, I didn't think I would probably ever use in the fire service, but as I move up the ranks and into various leadership roles, I find that it's a resource to fall back on as far as understanding diversity and where different folks come from. It's an excellent HR tool. I do have a minor in Computer Science, which I understand from my visit the other day with Bert that I'm probably a little outclassed in that department. There seems to be several IT folks in the department, which is a good thing to have as the fire service becomes more and more technologically advanced. I also have a master's in Fire Science with a Public Administration Concentration from Anna Maria College. And along with that Public Administration Concentration also comes a background and a foundation in emergency management. Currently, I'm in the midst of my Executive Officer Program with the National Fire Academy, so that's a four-year program. And along with developing management and leadership skills and talking about community risk reduction, it's also an excellent opportunity for me to build my network of contacts and resources throughout the country because each year that I go down, I meet folks from different areas of the country who have the same challenges and struggles in the fire service that we have here in the Northeast.
Thank you.
I take it you've done some homework about Carlisle and its fire department, and I'm wondering what challenges you seem facing the department in the upcoming year.
So in the upcoming year, I, so one of the challenges I know we're going to face is especially, so some of it's from my research and some of it's from the opportunity I had to spend to get a tour from Bert and spend some time with him, is that, you know, we're going to undergo some changes from folks that are going to age out and retire out of the department, so we're going to lose some of that internal knowledge and we're going to have to try and build our succession plan so that we're ready for that change at the end of the year. Certainly, one of the other big challenges that we're facing and was noted elsewhere but is readily apparent in my tour was that we have some space challenges that we need to address. And then sort of personally and professionally is that third challenge is probably going to be getting to know everyone, getting to know their strengths and weaknesses, and where they foresee their fire department headed to in the future.
Kerry, your turn.
Well, Colin, thank you so much for being with us today. I really look forward to meeting you. It's very interesting to me that Hollis and Carlisle are so similar in so many ways, even down to Old Home Day.
They very much are. They're very similar as far as a sort of socioeconomic background, Old Home Days, which ours is in the fall, yours is kind of late spring, and well as from a fire service perspective, they both rely heavily on rural water supply. I think I have about 5% to 8% of the town of Hollis that has pressurized water source and a pressurized hydrant, so it's a similar community makeup and it's also a very similar fire protection makeup.
Well, there are similarities, and I think your current population is 7,000 and change, and ours is 5,000, very similar. I'd like to get a sense of the organization that you're coming from. It's a combination department, as I understand it, where you have a number of folks, certainly the chief, I believe the assistant chief, you have three deputy chiefs and two lieutenants. That hierarchy is all sort of full-time, and you're one of those two lieutenants, correct?
So, correct. So the deputies, we have one full-time deputy, one part-time deputy, and one call deputy. And then, yeah, and then, yes, out of the...
Your primary responsibility is on the staff side, it seems, and is the other lieutenant primarily on the line side of things, or how does that?
No, the other lieutenant's primary responsibility is fire prevention and inspection.
Okay. Right, the one thing that I guess I have the most curiosity about is you're going from where you are, which is sort of three levels down in an organization, to the head of an organization that may not be a lot larger, but due to the nature that any of them can walk out the door and never come back, it could be, you know, a lot more challenging to manage that kind of completely on-call organization. And as I read your letter, "To Whom It May Concern," there were a lot of words like "plan, develop, update, edit, help, coordinate, et cetera," which I think speaks to the fact that what you have been doing as a lieutenant is primarily what I would call a staff function rather than a line function. Is that a fair...
I would say it's a fair, and then from the training perspective is that's sort of all mine from a complete management, from a complete management end, yep.
All right.
Yes.
Well, that, like, I guess the only question I have or concern I have is that, is number one, it's a big leap going from lieutenant to chief. Two, it's a new environment certainly for you with a lot of unknowns there. And three, it's going from what's been primarily staff and supportive to the leader of the organization in all aspects of it. The buck stops with Colin.
Absolutely.
And I guess I would ask you to comment on, what do you think about that statement? What do you think about the complexity of going from where you are to where you would be, and how would you best approach it?
So a couple of things. So just to briefly touch on the line and staff pieces, so we have two folks that are working on the 24-hour shift all the time. And then if they go out the door, we have a fire call, it's myself and the other lieutenant and the deputy who work in a line function when there is an emergency. So when there is a call or when there's a second EMS call, and those two folks are already out on a call, we're sort of transitioned into that line function as well. So that's a piece. The other thing, and I think I recall it correctly, is all-call. So Brookline is a similar department. It's all-call with the exception of the chief. And we have the opportunity there with our officers' meetings to sort of participate heavily in that critical decision-making that Chief Corey makes, and it's a lot of the changes that he makes as far as new policies and new procedures are brought through the officer corps prior to sort of making that leap. And we, as lieutenants over there, are in direct control of our company, whether it's four or five folks, and they're our charge and they're sort of our personnel management piece there. So while not all 37, we're responsible for that smaller portion of HR. Did I answer everything that you brought forward?
Yes, except how you view the challenge of going from here to there, which is a big leap.
It is, and I think one of the ways that I think I've prepared myself is through sort of that education background. The other piece is that managing the Training Division is, puts me in touch with everyone in the department. It's probably one of our most dynamic spots, so both bringing in new folks as well as training our existing members on a regular basis. And, you know, I've had the opportunity to work with the chiefs to sort of get a feel for where that next step is. It is, the jump from lieutenant to deputy would be the next step in sort of our organization and not one that will present itself probably anytime soon. The, I think it was just that, address that step, correct?
Well, it's, to go to chief from lieutenant to chief is a big step.
It is, and I think one of the advantages of working in a small organization is that you're involved in a lot of those decisions, and you're involved in a lot of the personnel piece as well as sort of the budget piece that you may not be necessarily involved in in a larger department at this level, but because it's such a small corps, we're all kind of have sort of a piece of the pie.
I think your budget is currently twice what ours is for the fire department.
You'd probably be correct on most of that, probably in salary.
All right. All right, thank you, Kerry.
Thank you.
Oh, you are going to go to me. I figured you'd circle right around. Perfect. So this is actually a question from the audience, but it was something similar to one of the ones that I had, and it kind of expands upon Kerry's a bit. So we are an all-call or on-call fire department. So what do you see as the advantages of on-call versus full-time versus hybrid? And which do you think is the best fit for Carlisle? I mean, ultimately, you know, down the road, do you see it staying all-call, or do you see it moving to a hybrid? Do you see it moving full-time? And they also had, and well, I'll get to that after, but...
But that's the main question. And I'll get to the question quickly.
No, that's all right. So I think the first piece of that is which is the best for Carlisle, and I think right now, we have the best fit. We have a good diversity of folks who have solid backgrounds and are able to assist with other challenges as they come up and do things around the station, as well as, you know, folks who are able to be around during the day, as well as folks that sort of can also cover at night. So I think that's the fit for Carlisle as it is right now. And one of the challenges going forward is to watch for, to make sure we sustain that model and make sure we have that sustainability out to the future. So what do we have to do as far as recruitment as folks move or folks change their availability to ensure that long-term, that recruitment and retention piece is there? So whether it's a junior firefighter program that can feed us or some other type of staffing model, you know, one that several of the New Hampshire, small New Hampshire towns have had some success with is a per diem for education program. So somebody that has their paramedic that wants to take their fire cert, they spend 12 hours with us, and all they ask in return is that we sponsor them for the Fire Academy. So it's a tax-friendly coverage sort of model. As far as towards the future and do we see it sustaining, I think that's, I hope I've partially addressed that with the, you know, are folks still around during the day and are they available? You know, we have, I think the last census number I saw was just under 10% of the folks work from home. How many of those folks may not know that we're volunteer and call and are available to leave that work-from-home assignment? And how many have to be logged in for the 12 hours they're at home and they have to be logged in and they have to be there, and we get that. We understand that. Long-term, I think there's some things on the horizon. The biggest challenge is going to be EMS. Is Emerson going to stay as an available option for us for ALS coverage? We know that they started with 20 towns. We know that they're down to seven. Are those seven towns, us being one of them, going to stay in it? I mean, certainly from my perspective, I see us staying in it. But if other towns go out, is that a prudent business model for pro-EMS to maintain? And if so, where do we need to go? So do we need to move towards a, I think if we move towards a hybrid model, it would be, in Carlisle, it would be more of a per diem, whether it's per diem for education or whether it's a true per diem program. You know, we have a strong base of folks sitting behind me who are able to cover nights and weekends and are dedicated to doing that, so it's filling that gap during the day. If sort of that crystal ball that we can't see presents a challenge that we need to overcome.
Thank you.
Me? Okay. You've been involved in two fire departments, one very similar to Carlisle's and one not exactly similar, but kind of a hybrid system.
Yep.
Could you describe your experience in actually going out and fighting fires? One of the issues here, obviously, is the chief will not only have to be the CEO, do the budget and all that good stuff, the fun part of the job, but will spend some time probably out on a truck.
Right.
Fighting fires. Could you describe your experience on actually in the online firefighting job part of the job?
I guess I'll try. And right, I am currently a member of two fire departments. I was also a member of two before we moved out of Vermont about 11 years ago, so two up there, so four. And certainly, the fire chief is going to be mostly administrative when we're here, but I'm also the person that needs to make sure that truck gets out the door, whether it be a fire engine or an ambulance, and making sure that, you know, we are responding to calls and also that that apparatus is available and ready for calls. So I think as far as actually fighting fire, I mean, we, when I started 20 years ago in Vermont, we probably had a building fire a month. And with the exception of the last month in Hollis and Brookline, I don't know as if we do more than one a year now. So it's something that we see less and less in the field. I have the advantage of, I can go back to Hollis for a call, or I can go to Brookline if I'm home for a call, so I have the advantage of sort of twice as much hands-on experience, if you will, with both of those. And then I also have the advantage of teaching for the state, which means that if I bid and get selected to teach at the Fire Academy, you know, usually once a month or so, there's some sort of live-fire day for one of the classes that's going on, and that provides me sort of another way to keep my skills sharp as far as passing on what I know to others, but also being in the environment and staying familiar with the environment as needed.
Could you describe for me one of the most challenging experiences that you faced and how you address that? And what made it challenging?
I think one of the challenging experiences, and I think it benefits me for sort of the move here, is the move from Vermont to New Hampshire. And I did two leaps at the same time. I changed states, we changed, actually, three. We changed residencies, and we also, I also went from strictly a volunteer to a career firefighter in a combination department. So there was multiple challenges. There's learning a new EMS system, and there's learning a new culture within a fire department. We all are kinship and a brother and sisterhood, but we all sort of have our own unique dynamics and unique personalities to adapt to. And I think sort of making that move from Vermont, where I had lots of contacts and knew lots of folks, to stepping into an organization that I didn't have as many contacts and didn't know as many folks, and needing to reassert the effort I had put in in the first eight years and displaying that to those folks that I was the right selection for that job, was certainly a challenging experience, and I think it's something that sort of laid the groundwork and hopefully set some foundation and some experience for this similar challenge.
In your essay, you said that as Carlisle looks to fund changes and capital improvements, both for equipment and staffing, I'll make use of my experience of writing grants as well as being a part of the federal grant evaluation process. What kind of experience have you had with that, and how, what kind of percentage of your, the budgets that you were dealing with were through grant-writing exercises?
So I don't know off the top of my head percentages. So currently, we have an outstanding AFG grant in Hollis for rescue equipment that's currently in process that was supposed to have already started awarding, but because of the government's shut down there, they have yet to start that rollout, so we're waiting to see that. I was the primary author on that, so we're waiting to see it. And then in Brookline, myself and one of the other firefighters wrote the SCBA grant, which we did get, and I do not know off the top of my head. I don't remember. It's now been about four years ago or so that we sort of co-authored and proofread each other's work to put that together, and I don't recall off the top of my head.
Is that for equipment or for operating expenses?
It was for equipment. So it was for new SCBAs, so self-contained breathing apparatus.
Okay, sorry, didn't know.
No, that's quite all right. My bad for using an industry acronym. But it was to replace our entire fleet for new breathing apparatus. And as far as, I think the second part of your question was how, what would I sort of, what would I bring here for that? I think one of the things, and, you know, again, sort of passing through the station with Deputy Rubenstein the other day, or Chief Rubenstein, my apologies, the other day, is that equipment looks good, but where we are looking at that sort of staffing and recruitment and retention model, and there are safer grants out there for recruitment and retention to offset the cost of materials, to offset the cost of someone to coordinate that program and bring folks in and offset some of those initial training expenses that can kind of vary from year to year, because if I bring in one person this year and versus five next, obviously, that's something that's a little harder to budget for. So I think that would be one of the things to look at for a town like Carlisle.
Kerry?
Well, I want one thing that's been on my mind and has nothing to do directly with our conversation here, but I'm very curious how you would answer this. Over the last, Colin, over the last, and I'm sure you have the same situation in Hollis, four or five years, we've had very wet weather, ground saturated, a lot of storms, a lot of wind, a lot of stuff blown down and laying there for years.
Yes.
And prior to that, I can remember the drought that we had, which was very significant. The reservoirs were all drying up as I drove along 128. What do you think the role of the fire department ought to be from a preparedness standpoint in keeping us out of the same situation that Northern California has been in from a wildfire situation? Because we are all woods here, and there's just so much stuff laying around that would be tinder for uncontrollable fire and a lot of property damage as a result. What would you see as the role of our fire department going forward in addressing that kind of a situation, as ill-defined as it is and as out of scope as it may seem, but would it be a concern?
I think we... I, I think we, it's one of those things that always sort of has to be in the, in the back of our mind, that if we get another drought like we did three or four years ago, that, that possibility exists. I think one of the roles for us is education of the community and using sort of my network through Volunteer Fire Council or the Association of Fire Chiefs or those folks that I've met through National Fire Academy that live out west, they are very familiar with the Forest Service and NFPA's Fire Wise Program, which provides us with material and some guidance to go out and speak to folks who, as we drive through the community, see that material built up near their house. And it's a program that encourages folks to keep the area immediately around their house either green grass or some sort of non-combustible material, so stone or pavement or, or something in the immediate vicinity of their, of their home that's non-combustible. So it's a, it's a, it's a community education piece from our end. And I think we, similar to Brookline, we have this sort of unique opportunity where the fire department is incorporated into the town. Where, you know, in Brookline, we're involved in Old Home Days, we're involved in our, in our tree lighting ceremony, we're involved in our winter carnival. We always have folks present that can, that can hand out flyers, that can talk to folks about, you know, how you can help mitigate your own challenge within your yard to sort of keep it from expanding. And then the other piece is educating folks about, about open burning, you know. Massachusetts has a very set period of time and everybody wants to sort of get everything done in that set period of time. We're a little luckier in New Hampshire. We allow it most of the year with the exception of, of high drought days. So, and part of it may be working with, with this board or with DPW too, to find alternatives for folks to bring some of that debris as they clean it up, you know. If their normal path route is burning it, you know, getting out there and spreading the message that not only should you clean around your house, but DPW has the ability to, to sort of either pick that up or has the ability to, for someplace for you to bring it to dispose of.
Thank you.
Megan?
I love open burning, by the way.
The last week in April was a tense time for me.
Yeah, May 1st is our cutoff.
None of his neighbors like him.
No, no.
Just look for the plume, yeah. So another question from, from the crowd, but I think we were emailed one similar and then it was something similar to what I had. Basically, the vision of where you see the fire department in, say, five years and 10 years. I mean, ideally, if, you know, the numbers stay and we can stay an on-call department and the numbers stay high and you don't necessarily have to worry about recruitment.
I do, yes.
You know, what, what changes or implementations or, I guess, things would you like to see happen, improvements, I guess is a good word, would you like to see happen over the next five years and 10 years? And what do you think is actually implementable? You know, I mean, I think the fire station would be ideal, but it's not necessarily implementable. You know, but, but that's the thing.
You took my, you took my item off the, off the top of the list, which was, is certainly space. And whether that's, that's a new facility or expansion to our own, I think that's one of the first things we need to look at. And, and that helps with a lot of those other pieces that you mentioned. So the recruitment and retention and having, having good clean space, having sufficient amount of space to do everything we want and that space that our members want to spend time in is hugely beneficial. I think one of the other sort of things to contemplate is, coming back to EMS and let's go with the scenario that we keep, the model we have is, do we find space and can we find space to bring onboard a second ambulance? And does the call volume support having that, having that other apparatus in town and available? Most, I think most towns of Carlisle's size will, will agree that five years on a front line and five years as a backup is about the, is about the standard for, for departments that are doing less than, say, 1,500 calls or so, which is right where we are. And so having that, that second availability, I think is, is a big piece. And then it's, part of sort of that 10-year plan is sitting down with the folks sitting behind me and getting their, what they think the strengths and weaknesses and what they see as a, as a goal and what they want to change versus what has to stay the same in Carlisle to keep it the Carlisle Fire Department. And over that 10-year period, making sure that that plan gets updated and moved forward and stays a living and breathing document. I was at the town meeting last night for our school district's co-op and someone brought up their strategic plan that hasn't been updated in eight years. Things like that at a public meeting are not something that I want to see happen to, to my department and things to avoid. So, and it's keeping the members involved and keeping them, keeping the communication, establishing excellent communication and keeping that communication open to, you know, what opportunities are available to sort of provide your input to where the officers are steering the organization.
You're one of the few candidates who are enrolled in the Executive Fire Officer Program. Could you describe that a bit and what benefits that brings to this position?
So the Executive Fire Officer Program is a four-year program. It's a master's level program put on by the National Fire Academy. Two weeks of residency each year, followed by a roughly six-month period to write a research project and, or a research proposal. And that research proposal is intended to be something that your department, so the town of Carlisle and the Carlisle Fire Department can use to improve its operations and come better in line with national standards. The four pieces are sort of an introduction to executive leadership, which is getting folks off the ground and getting them familiar with being at this level. There's a community risk reduction piece, so bringing in community education and the importance of fire prevention, community education and good, and good data management. There's a, the third year is a broad-based incident management, emergency management type program. And then the last piece is, sorry, the first year is executive development, the last year is executive leadership. And the, that last piece is building your succession plan and making sure that you have folks in place and you have matrix in place to ensure that the, the folks you're, you're promoting to senior firefighter and then promoting to lieutenant are ready to take that next step when the captain or the deputy decide that, you know, either, either it's time to retire or one of the things we, we see in the call service and volunteer service too, is that our time commitments change. And that's okay, that our time commitments change. Today, you have time to be a lieutenant or a captain and in six months, you, you get a new job or you have a new baby or a new significant other, you have to move for work. And we understand that that may change your availability to do those things. But part of this, that last course is making sure we fill that, we have that step ready to fill that gap. The other thing and sort of the informal piece is that it builds my network of resources to solve challenges within my organization. Because, just because Carlisle has it doesn't mean Carlisle's the only place with it. So after my first year, I, I reached back out to one of my classmates who's a deputy chief in Boulder. And we have a challenge, and I'm sure Carlisle has the same challenge, daytime pump operator training. So getting folks to flow multiple lines through a water source and, and, and being able to be proficient pump operators with limited supervision is, is a challenge to get folks through that multiple times and on short notice, because you need six to eight people to do it. And, and her challenge in Boulder was she couldn't pay overtime for the full-time folks to come in. So what she came up with was a prop that holds four hand lines and doesn't need a human being there. And so I asked permission and we copied her idea. And so now if someone is in the middle of pump training, I don't need to worry about finding a bunch of folks during the day while the sun is out, especially this time of year, because no one wants to flow water at this time of night when it's this temperature. So finding folks during the day, and I don't have to necessarily worry about that and I can do it a little more impromptu. So it's, it's resources like that, that irregardless of a different department's staffing model, we all sort of have the same challenges and being able to use that network to, to overcome those challenges. Because somebody's had it. You just have to frame it in the right way.
So I'm trying to figure out how to frame this as a question. But, so I, I think you can probably tell from a lot of the questions that you've gotten here that, you know, that there is a strong desire, you know, that Carlisle loves having a call fire department. And, you know, going to a full-time chief is a huge step for us. But I think that we, we felt that, we discussed anyway.
Watch out for him.
I felt that really going to a, a full-time chief was one of the ways that we could potentially maintain a call fire department.
Yeah.
Because we would have somebody who had much more time to be able to focus on ensuring that we maintained a call fire department. So, you know, we didn't, we didn't go to a call, to a full-time chief to be able to reduce other hours or, you know, move more, more things into the, the chief's role. We did this because we really wanted to maintain the call fire department. I know, speaking for just myself, I have zero appetite at all for having a fire chief come to us and say, we want another full-time person. The, so with, you know, and you mentioned this as one of the challenges. But I want to ask you just to elaborate a little bit more with your experience in a call fire department. You know, we've done a lot of really good work and gotten a lot of new people lately. But really, how can you make sure that you're successful in, in maintaining a call fire department for us?
So, so part of it is the, the folks that are sitting behind me and, and spreading the word and, and their neighbors and their friends seeing what they do and, and them having a positive piece and positive things to say about our organization, which I think the fact that they're sitting behind me says that they do and speaks to the level of professionalism and dedication to those folks. And then, so the next piece is long-term, right? So part of it is, you know, part of what I would see as a vision is a junior firefighter program. So we, we take folks that are, that are leaving our eighth grade here in town and before they, before they step out that door and before they leave to go to Concord, which is, we have a similar challenge in Brookline, that we have a cooperative school and it's in Hollis, is getting them enrolled in a junior firefighter program so they can see what we do. They can see if this is something they would like to be interested in. And then one of the advantages of that program is when they turn 18, it's sort of a seamless transition into an active firefighter who doesn't have yet any certifications, but they're, that training piece doesn't have to occur at their 18th birthday. The other, the other piece that sort of I initially envisioned based on the, the initial posting was that using the emergency management role, and I know you spoke to it at last week's select board meeting about whether or not it was going to stay with the fire chief or whether Chief Fisher was going to take over. And I think there was some discussion about which direction we want to head. But I think for myself, using that sort of emergency management piece to look at a CERT program, which is a citizen emergency response team, Brookline has had some success with theirs in not grabbing very many folks, but grabbing one or two who have some limited availability, want to help during a disaster and see that there's more to it than that. And then they sort of transition over to that other piece of being involved in EMS and wanting to, to sort of take that next step. So again, that's a long-term, those are both long-term things and those are both things that hopefully will help sustain the department as we go forward. The other piece is, and it sort of speaks to the community risk reduction and it speaks to fire prevention, but we spend a lot of time in fire prevention in primary schools. One of the things that I would like to do as I, as I come into town is get a chance to meet with all the various groups and, that are in town and the various organizations. And whether it's teach, you know, stop the bleeding, hands only CPR to, say, the PTA, or a similar organization to that and, and get sort of in the door and, and say hello and have their contact information. So when we do an open house or when we do a membership drive, we have that information to sort of say, come on down. One of the things that the National Volunteer Fire Council says in, in a lot of their literature and which, of which I'm a member, is that the vast majority of folks who join a volunteer fire department that have no emergency service connection, so to speak, and no one in their family is, say, it took them so long to join because no one ever asked them. So I think that's a big piece of being out in the community, being at Old Home Days, being at various events and various community functions and, and asking folks and, and just telling them what it's all about and explaining the process and how it works.
Okay, thank you.
I'll ask another one. Colin, do you have any questions for us?
I, I think my biggest question would be, you know, what are, what are some of your goals and expectations of, of me and of the, of that, you know, you envisioned that sort of full-time piece to, and recruitment and retention being part of it? What are some of the other goals and expectations that this board has of the person that moves into that position?
Well.
You're the chair, hey. Go for it.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, clearly based upon my first question, it's, it's getting the call firefighters, it's ensuring that we can maintain the call fire department. I think that it's also maintaining a, a culture that people want to be a part of.
Absolutely.
You know, it's, it's, it's a part of the Carlisle community, it's a part of the Carlisle family.
Very similar to, very similar to Brookline.
Yeah. And, and just maintaining that and maintaining that, in that, that constant presence everywhere. It's not only a recruiting tool, it's just a part of what makes Carlisle the place I love to live in. And, you know, for me, other ones, you know, I'm not going to take them all, hopefully, but it's, it's, it's ensuring that people, that people are progressed and that they're, that there's, you know, that people are empowered to go into different roles and, and do those, and do those roles. And without, when we get to the need for somebody to fill a lieutenant role, there's, there's, there are, there are clear candidates for people to be promoted into those roles.
And I think if I can speak to that for one moment before, is making sure, from my, from my seat, so to speak, is making sure that those lines are clear. And that, that expectation is, of what I expect and what we expect of a, of a lieutenant and a captain is clear. And it's so that when someone wants to progress to that role, they know what they need to do to get there. And it's also, part of it also is, is recognizing and rewarding our dedicated and maybe above-average dedicated members with, you know, the ability for them to attend maybe an outside conference or something that they might not normally be able to do because they're, they have that sort of extra level of dedication above, say, the, the average member, even if they have yet not been promoted into that role.
Yeah, I think another thing we, we would be looking for is a strong advocate for the department. A number of years ago, it's been, I don't know how many years it's been now, we, at one point, maybe five or seven years ago, we had a recognition day for the police and fire department. And they held it up at the school. It's a wonderful day. We haven't done it since. And we probably need to be encouraged to do that kind of thing. And one of the elements of leadership is to be advocates for the department. And so I was thinking, looking for someone to say, you are, you are the strongest advocate for your department and are out there beating the bushes, making us appreciate what you all do.
Right. And so one of the things and, and that I, every department that I have always been a part of has had some sort of either annual supper or banquet or fireman's recognition night, whatever it happens to be. And it's important not only to recognize the, the folks in job shirts and jackets that are sitting behind me, but also it's an opportunity for them to, to thank their family with a, with, you know, a dinner and to recognize some of those folks that have gone above and beyond sort of the average and above and beyond maybe for a particular call too. And I think that's an important piece of the call department and being part of Carlisle is making sure that we include significant others and children and the entire family because we are taking away from their time. You know, we, they're getting, these, the men and women behind me are getting up from dinner and, and story time and whatever else it happens to be. And it's important to, to remember and recognize that, that other half that hangs out at home and takes care of everything else for us.
Could you describe your management style?
Yeah, so I would say my management style is, is, is twofold. It's, it's goal-driven. So if I'm going to, if we're going to try and accomplish a, a project, I'm going to give, if it's, if it's if it's, if it's a small project, we're going to, you know, put it out there as this is something that needs to be done, but we're going to give you the, the tools and the objectives that need to, that need to get done and sort of put that forward. If it's, if it's something bigger, say, an apparatus purchase or something along those lines, we're going to, I'm going to look for one of my officers to spearhead that and get three or four folks on board. We're going to give you the, we're going to give you the tools and the, and the objectives and point you in a direction, but also not just leave you out there. It's, it's regular communication and it's regular touch base with, you know, okay, so how is that going? If I were to do it, I might expect it to take two weeks, but I know that somebody who hasn't done it before, that's looking for a challenge, that's looking to broaden their knowledge base, maybe it takes three or four. So, making sure we also leave them, leave those folks enough time to get that done. And the, the second dimension of that is, is sort of a, to, to steal the term from the air for, from the aircraft industry, is kind of a, a crew resource management perspective. And it's, and it's something that works, I find, better almost in a, in a call department where you find those folks who have strong skill sets and strong assets in whatever you need done and you use those sort of subject matter experts to lead that project or program. Regardless of their formal rank, they may be the, the expert to get a project done because of what they do on the outside of here. You know, if it's, if it's an IT thing and they work for an IT company, they, and it's okay that they're not a lieutenant or a captain, they might be the person that can get that project done the best and they already have sort of the requisite knowledge. They don't have to learn some of the basics to, to troubleshoot that, so to speak.
Okay, and how about in dealing with conflict or performance management, performance issues?
So, the first, so the, the first step for me for a, for a performance issue is that the fire service is built on that chain of command and, and the lieutenants have a, have a company of folks and they report to the captain and that reports to the deputy and myself. And the, the first sort of piece is to sit down with that person's lieutenant and say, you know, Luke is having, is having some challenges and he has.
You know it.
He's having some challenges and this is sort of, we, I want you to talk to him and, and see if we can flush some of these things out. And if the lieutenant says, you know, this is, you've, "Chief, you've been here two months, we've been dealing with this for six or eight," then it's, it's moving that sort of up to the next, to the next level to the, to the captain. And it's, it's building a plan for that person and making sure that, A, they know what they're not doing. I think sometimes we find that folks say, "He didn't know what he was doing." And you find out later that maybe he wasn't trained on that piece of equipment or he hasn't used it in a while and it just needs a refresher. And it's just sort of an update that the lieutenant can handle. Sometimes you find that it's something that we need to build a bigger plan for and sort of move forward. But it's including the rest of, at least initially, including the rest of that officer group so that we're all sort of on the same page. One of the things we find at our officers' meetings in, in Brookline is when we sit down and somebody comes to me, you know, someone will bring up the topic of, "Well, Luke didn't do something."
Me again, geez.
And it turns, and it, and it turns, and it turns out that, you know, I'll have the same concern about, about Tim. And so.
There we go.
By, by including sort of the, the officer group in that, in that immediate, short, confidential officer meeting discussion, we can quickly identify whether it's a person or whether it's a department sort of challenge that we need to address in a, in a, in a department training or we need to address in a greater scale. Because somebody spending two hours with Luke and then spending two hours with Tim when we could have spent three hours with everyone and we just hadn't noticed that Nathan had, had an issue with it yet.
Nobody will.
Sort of works to, works to kind of help everybody move forward as a, as a group. Did that answer everything you were looking for?
I'm not going to go around anymore to say, "Anybody have any more questions?"
I just want to quick think. So, it is a strong chief position and, you know, I mean, that gives you a lot of autonomy to make decisions. And I think just one of the things that we've struggled with over the past few years is the budget process. We just haven't had a lot of clarity into what certain needs were and money was kind of floating around freely in the budget, you know? And I don't think this board has ever not been supportive of the fire department. It's just, I think the past couple of years have been a bit challenging because we've been thrown stuff that we weren't really expecting or, you know, we're, we're clamping down on everybody's budget because the town just is, it's tight, right?
Yes, everyone is, yes.
Yeah, and, and I mean, I think ultimately, you know, well, there's got to be fantastic communication within your department. I think just, you know, making sure that there's open communication with us and that you feel like you can come to Tim or Nathan or whoever's chair at the time, you know, to have these discussions. I mean, I think we have a pretty good relationship with, you know, Chief Fisher, you know, and he's, you're not a strong chief, right?
No.
No. A hell of a chief, but not a strong chief. But, you know, I think that's just an important piece with this. And it's not that, you know, the outgoing chief did anything wrong or, I just think it's one area that things could improve a bit, you know, just kind of making sure that line of communication stays open so we can be as supportive of the department as possible.
I think that sort of speaks to that sort of first sort of 60 to 90 days of getting, sitting down with the folks behind me and getting, and getting sort of their vision and laying out that and that by hopefully this time next year, having laid out that strategic plan that you guys can see and sort of, you know, it's, yes, it's a living, breathing document and it's going to change every couple of years, but at least you have the grand scale of, you know, you know that in 10 years, we're going to need SCBA's or we're going to need X amount of gear and that kind of thing. Yeah.
Okay. I have just one other question. The, so where did you see this poll? You saw this posted somewhere?
Yes.
What made, what made you decide to apply? Why Carlisle?
So, well, I think, I think it's, I think it's twofold, right? It's so, so what, why Carlisle for me and why, why I think I, why I think Carlisle could benefit from me. So, from a, from a why Carlisle position and why applied is, is many of the things that Mr. Kishin's always mentioned. It's, it's a community that's very similar to what I'm familiar with from Essex, Vermont to Brookline and Hollis, New Hampshire. It's that, it's that small, close-knit town where the fire department is part of the, part of the community thread, so to speak. There's a, a similar sort of fire protection dynamic to, to what I have in the fact that, you know, it's all rural water supply in sort of before I applied in, in reaching out to my network of contacts and two of which, one of which works in Acton and one of which works full-time in Westford, hearing good things about the department, hearing about the, you know, the professionalism and, and sort of the support that the town has for it based on the, the apparatus and, and such. And then, the, the next piece for me was the fact that my wife works for Millimore Sigma off in Burlington. And so, that piece for us was a, was a, was a plus because as if I do get offered the job and we, I am your next fire chief, when we move down this way, she has a much shorter commute. So, I mean, that would be part of sort of our plan is to, is to move either closer to or within Carlisle depending on, you know, where we end up with salary. And then, so what I thought I could bring to Carlisle is much, is much similar to some of the things we've, we've discussed. So, my experience with different backgrounds and different departments and that have the similar thing and my education background from both the emergency management as well as the fire science, my network of folks from the National Fire Academy as well as my network of folks from teaching with the New Hampshire, the New Hampshire Fire Academy. This afternoon, I had quite the lengthy conversation with the former head of the New Hampshire EMS division who's now the, the chief in St. Johnsbury. And he had, he knew that I was in this process, so he sort of called and, and talked about a few things, but it was also, you know, I can bring that sort of network to bear as well as my experience with, with different organizations. And I think there's something to be said about a volunteer organization that just has a different feel and, and is sort of comforting to, to be around.
Okay. So, if anybody else has any, I'm just going to ask the last question.
Sure.
Which, which you may, you, you largely already answered in that last answer, but I want, I want you to be able to kind of create a package. Could you give us your elevator pitch, your 30, 60-second elevator pitch, why we should hire you?
So, I think I bring to Carlisle 20 years of experience in the, in the volunteer fire service as well as a, as an education background that supports this position of a chief. It's the, the next step in my career and I think I bring that background of the network and the education piece that Carlisle is looking for as you take, like you said, that, that big leap to continue the growth of the department into a full-time organization. And I had one other thing. But sort of bringing that all together and I think one of the other benefits that I, that I bring is the fact that, you know, we talked about response and part of the day is admin and part of the day is response, but I also bring that ability to train folks during the day, not to take over for the current training officer and we'll leave his or her programs mostly in line, but to be able to be another asset for folks during the day and, and be a resource for folks that just need to talk about something or go over something during the day and, and bring all of my 20 years to, to continued growth and continued forward movement of the Carlisle Fire Department.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
Pleasure to be your judge.
Shake his hand.
I was going to ask him how good he is at barbecuing large amounts of chicken.
So, so the Brookline Fire Department, we also do a, a chicken barbecue fundraiser. So, when I, when I saw the racks the other day with the chief, I, I was very familiar with what those were and very familiar with the, the process of, of, of large amounts of barbecued chickens.
Thank you. Want to grab a drink? Anybody want a drink?
I brought my own.
Yeah. I forgot that, my problem.
We're calling the meeting back to order, Perry.
Is that your tough guy voice?
Let me see that.
Look at everybody jump.
That's great, that's it.
No.
Hello.
Hello.
How you doing?
I'm still looking at my phone.
I'm going to shake her.
Yeah, we'll, we'll all shake hands.
You've got mine.
Thank you for coming in yet again. So, we're going to, please take questions, turns asking questions, many of the questions you've already heard before, but, you know, your answers may generate other questions. We also do have some questions from the community that we'll be asking. So, with that, we'll go ahead and get started. So, could you take, take a few minutes to just explain, you know, introduce yourself if people know you, but if you could introduce yourself and talk about your experience and certifications and education and, you know, kind of like what makes you right, you know, just that we are, we're all on this, you know, level playing field as knowing about you.
Okay. So, I grew up in Maryland. I went to college in Indiana. I met my wife, Molly, there who grew up in a little town in Massachusetts, Carlisle. And so, I started visiting Carlisle from, from that. I live at, on Litchfield Drive. I live in town. I went to a liberal arts college. We ended up getting married. We got married in Carlisle. I started doing, my, my undergraduate was computer science, but it was a liberal arts, bachelor of arts degree. I had several jobs mainly database-related, then went to graduate school, information science, went to Pittsburgh, went there for a master's degree. They convinced both Molly and I to stay around for a PhD. I continued to work at a number of startups in Pittsburgh while I was doing that. I was, almost dissertation, we decided we should, it was a good time to have a child. We ended up with twins.
Surprise.
Yeah, it was a bit of a surprise. And so, also my advisor disappeared or left. So, little kink in my plans and we decided that it would, was a good time to move and start working full-time for me. So, we moved to Carlisle. So, that was about 20 years ago. Moved to Carlisle. I did consulting work and then I worked at several startups and, you know, met people that, you know, when one company was about to close or move, you know, found another job and moved on. My last startup was in the process of, I, I had just heard that they were going to close and I had a friend who called me from IBM and said, from Lotus IBM and said, "I know you wouldn't consider leaving this early from your job, but is there any chance we can convince you to, to come to IBM?" So, it was easy to convince me as I had just heard the company was closing. So, I, I ended up at IBM and I've been there ever since. So, I've been at IBM for a number of years now. A lot of the work I've done has been database-related, whether it's design, development, operations, you know, anything around that. As IBM got into more cloud services, I started doing cloud operations and cloud services. And from that, I've ended up for the last several years doing security and compliance work. You could say that a lot of the risk management, compliance activities are very, are similar concepts to what we have to do in the fire service, especially on the chief level in terms of compliance. So, there are different laws, you're having, are different rules, different laws that you're complying with, but it's still compliance activities. So, 18 years ago, so when I'm in a community, I like to find what's unique, interesting about that community, what, what makes the culture the way it is. And Carlisle, I thought the fire department was, was one of those things. It was something that made sense to me. So, I joined the fire department 18 years ago. Kind of quickly learned a lot of the skills that I needed to have. I went and got firefighter one, two. I've taken a number of, of classes and all. And as they needed other skills, I, I learned them and have moved up. Last several years, they've needed officers. I became an officer. I've been through officer, you know, one and two at the Fire Academy, instructor one at the Fire Academy, continued to, to do that kind of thing. As I've thought about becoming a chief, I have, you know, joined the National Volunteer Fire Council. I've been to the, you know, chief's, small-town chief roundtable meetings that they have and all, and those kinds of things have been very helpful in thinking about what we could, what we could and should be doing here and finding mentors of people that, that could So, yeah, I, I think the, the kinds of things I bring to it have to do with, you know, the administrative compliance side of things. I have the, the fire experience. I also have the empathy of having children, having, you know, a 60-hour, 50, 60-hour week job and doing fire service here, which is what we're asking our other members to do. And also the empathy of being a taxpayer in town.
Thank you.
So, you've been in town for 18 years? You've been thinking about.
Over 20 years.
Rather, in the department.
Department, yeah.
And you've been thinking about, been thinking about it and I was wondering what you, what challenges, immediate challenges you see facing Carlisle and its fire department coming up?
So, a call fire department will always have recruitment and retention challenges, especially, you know, in these days. So, so, you know, if people, if it's not an environment people want to be at, it's very easy to leave. So, so recruitment, retention is, is important. We will have to promote quite a bit in the next couple, few years. So, we'll have to recruitment, probably recruit five to six people a year. We will have to promote. We, we need, we'll need a number of officers. We also need, then need to take the people who are coming in and make them what we call regular firefighters. And then, the, the other things that of course are coming up are what we're going to do about the paramedic service. things that of course are coming up are what we're going to do about the paramedic service. So, we have an arrangement right now that may or may not survive many of our departments around us becoming paramedic level. We probably will not, that would be a very tough thing for us to do, so we would need to figure out how to make arrangements to provide paramedic service.
You're talking about the Emerson?
Yes, so providing paramedic service right now. So, that financially is not something that may, you know, it's a for-profit group that when they can't make a profit, we'll need to, we'll need to do something about that. The other thing, of course, is facilities. We have challenges with our facilities and part of that has to do with changes to our membership in terms of the numbers of people we need to have and also the kinds of calls we have. We have more medicals now than we have fire. And then, also having women on the force, et cetera. So, there are facilities, things that we're just going to have to deal with.
Kerry?
Hi, Brian.
Hello.
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you just fine.
All right. This is, this is hard because I know so much about you and yet I know so little about you relative to this role in the fire department. We both had a similar work experience, I believe, at a very large company who had three initials, name them, and I know how rewarding and challenging and stressful that can all be. I think, however, having been there for as long as you were in the roles that you had, I think if you were at a cocktail party or a social event in Boston and you were standing around asking people, so tell me, you know, Brian, what do you do? I think you would probably say you worked on the Watson project at IBM and led a team there rather than say, "I'm a firefighter in Carlisle on a volunteer basis." Is that, your identity has been primarily that of working in the private sector, hasn't it?
I think it's surprising how quickly your identity becomes firefighter once you start doing it. It's not something I expected, but it's something that's quite true. If you go around this town, I'm identified as a firefighter. So, firefighter is as much of my identity as database, you know, expert.
So, why did you decide that you wanted to leave that and do this full-time at a very senior level?
I think because I can see what the challenges are. Their challenge, I enjoy problem solving. I think I'm a creative problem solver and I can envision how to solve the kinds of problems we have here. Also, it's a, you know, time in my life, this is, I spent many years improving the return for shareholders, and there's some, something rewarding about that, but I think there's something more rewarding to helping your neighbors and providing what I think is an excellent service to the town. So, I think it's what I enjoy, what I find rewarding on a personal level. My children are through college. I don't need quite the income I had, and it's nice to do something for me. I've done, I've worked pretty hard to, in jobs that, you know, this would, I feel, I think, a lot more rewarding to me.
Well, I think one of the most important aspects of this job is leadership. And, you know, I know you've had a lot of leadership opportunities on, in your work life in terms of leading teams of people and where you're, you're not the boss, but you're the leader.
Right.
I know that you've led, been a fire ground leader in your role here, but this kind of leadership we're talking about is you're the boss of the whole shooting match and you're the go-to person for everything. This is a whole different level of leadership and you mentioned that you did a lot of risk assessment. How do you assess the risk of making this kind of a jump at this stage in your career?
A risk to me?
Yes.
Yeah.
For us.
No, I mean, I think, I think in terms of when you pause to think about the kind of role you're taking on, you know, this is a, you're coach of a team where people can get killed, right? So, you don't take that lightly. But in terms of sitting down and thinking through what the positives and negatives of this, which of course you do, the positives go off the page and the negatives are not terribly large. I have found, you know, as I've moved up, in fact, I think it's been more rewarding. I think my relationships with the people in the department have actually improved as I've done more leadership. So, that part of it doesn't, doesn't, I'm not scared about any of that. But, but it will be a different kind of role. It will be a different kind of role and especially in terms of relationships with the town. But, that's, those are some of the challenges that I think I understand. I think, you know, we need a chief who is going to work with the board of selectmen, with the town, with surrounding towns, all of that kind of thing, and that's part of the challenge that I'm looking forward to.
Thank you.
So, question from the crowd, and we asked the last, I think everybody kind of knows where you stand on this, but the advantages and disadvantages of an on-call versus hybrid versus career department, obviously, and you've said it numerous times, that I think this board is highly supportive of, you know, keeping it all-call, the exception of full-time chief. But, you know, how do you see the department staying or changing over time?
So, there are some real advantages to a call department in terms of what it can do for the town. So, when you have, you know, 30 members and six trucks that you can deploy at once, you know, you, to try to do that with a full-time department would, is not quite possible, right? So, we're in an environment with no water that, you know, having, being able to deploy one truck doesn't quite cut it, right? So, for us, fighting a fire is 12 people, it's 15 people to get started. So, for us, the model, I think, works well. I think a lot of people, it would be very easy to make an argument that we should be looking at a combination model, and I could make that argument. I think if you, one would do that, you have to be very careful about the cultural change because, you know, once you have two or three people that are doing all the calls and, oh, well, you know, you have a job, we don't really, you know, thanks for helping, but, you know, whatever, all of a sudden you don't have those people volunteering anymore and going on calls anymore, and all of a sudden you find out all you have is two people. So, you have to be very careful about it. Where we've seen towns around us, you know, the combination model can work for a while. It's a one-way street. You're going in a certain direction. It tends to work as long as you hire the people from within the department. What we've seen is where you start hiring people from outside your department, you very quickly have moved your way into a full-time model. I think any change in that direction, you have to be really careful about culture, and that's, you know, we're all trying to provide a service to the public and all of those kinds of things, but culture's king in a call department. So, that's what you have to be very careful about.
Thank you.
Obviously, we've had some challenges on recruitment and retention in recent years. They've, we've been better in recent years. What would be your approach to trying to make that a more sustained effort and actually solve some of our manning and limiting issues?
Right. So, I think there are some places where the town probably needs to spend a little so that they can save a lot, right? So, there are some incremental kinds of things that we can do in that regard. But I think in general, an understanding and a realization that you need to be recruiting five people a year makes a huge difference. A realization that you need to be moving people forward, a realization that having more, you know, having more people doing training, it's good for the people doing training and it's also good for the people getting trained and enlarging your training program and kind of revamping some of how we do that. So, all of those kinds of things. In terms of recruitment, you know, you got to be in town. You got to be around. I joined the fire department because I went to pull a wood permit from my wood stove and I talked to, you know, Chief Coney, right? He was in town. He was around and we talked to him. And when you're part of town and everybody sees you, I have people come up to me to talk about it, right? Because all of a sudden you're Mr. Fire Department and that's what we're familiar for. So, I think there are some also, you know, there are a number of things that we could do in terms of understanding our demographic that we're going after, right? So, what demographic works for us? And it's maybe surprising to many people that it's often people with young children are actually a good demographic for us. And so, how do you make that work? How do you, if you want to recruit people for the daytime, you know, one of the things I've thought about a number of times is having an EMT class, you know, that we offer here in the daytime. We come to it. People who are around in the day. What would they do? They walk through the fire station and start thinking about joining a fire department, you know?
Lock them in.
Providing that, you know. There are a number of things you can do. They're not resource-free, but they're also very incremental in there.
So, I'm not going to ask the question that I asked last time because I think it's just going to be beating up this whole volunteer, you know, on call fire department thing. But, you know, I would say that I think that it falls upon the person in this role and the communication with the board of selectmen to make sure that there are resources available to ensure that we can be, maintain a call fire department. And I think if in a year or three years or five years, we were having a discussion about, "We can't do it," I think it probably means we hired the wrong person. You know, it's that important. So, could you, could you describe for me a challenging experience you had and what makes that experience stand out and how did you deal with it?
Maybe I'll choose one from work. So, I've had numbers of times, you know, often challenging things happen when you have, you know, I've had very good management and very poor management, and you work, learn how to work with poor management, and that's always a challenge. But I think a specific I'll talk about is, we had a, you know, major client. We had a large migration and it was financially a big deal, like big fines if it didn't work out and had to happen over a weekend and all, and so lots of planning and development and people had, you know, promised everything had been fully tested and it, you know, performed fine, and the output was good and everything was good and all these kinds of things. And this was, you know, millions and millions of dollars of, on the line. And so, you know, Friday evening, we started in and the output wasn't right and there was no way this was going to be done by Monday, you know, and it was not going to be okay. And we all got together. I helped them come up with different algorithms that were both more accurate and would perform, you know, and we all got together and got through it. The thing that you come away from that is a realization that if we had stopped to say, "Whose fault was this?" Let's point fingers, you know, "It wasn't my job to do the testing. You guys messed up here," we wouldn't have finished. So, you know, stop and say, "This is time-sensitive. We need, we have a problem. Let's solve this problem. Let's put all of our heads together, including the people who were involved in the mess-up, and let's get this fixed." And I think that's kind of the lesson that comes out of that is you can always do a post-mortem later, but when you have a problem that needs to get solved, you know, there was no way that we would have been successful if we hadn't just put our heads together to solve the problem.
Thanks.
So, we've all mentioned resources and you're a taxpayer here. You know what kind of a tax rate we have. And we've also mentioned, you know, you know, challenges and things that money could solve. I'm just wondering if you have had any experience in writing grants or if you think of other ways of, you know, raising funds besides the tax levy to be looking to fund the department?
Right. So, I think, you know, there are, you know, on the medical side, that's a little bit more self-funding, and there are things we can do with some of that. So, in terms of grant writing, you know, I went to a liberal arts college. I've done plenty of writing. I'm probably a better writer than I am a talker. But, you know, and volunteer fire council, they have resources and mentors through some of those things that you can even get, you know, send your grants off to people who can review them, who are reviewers in other contexts. So, there's resources that we have never tapped to help us have successful grants. I'm not sure that'll mean that we have successful grants, but we definitely have not tapped some of those resources and that would be something I would plan to do. I don't think we can count on that to be a major source of, you know, we may get a washer out of it. We may get a, you know, 10 or 20 or $30,000 grant for something. Like the safer grants may be somewhat significant for some of the things, but it's difficult for a town with Carlisle's demographics to be very successful, to count on being very successful in grants the way more needy towns are. But, I would definitely have the skills, I think, to be able to do that. And resources, call on other resources. We have, you know, within our department, one of the things we needed to start doing is make better use of the other people in our department. We have wonderful resources within the department for some of that, to help do that.
Kerry?
Well, this is something that's been sort of on my mind. I'd like to know what you think about it. We, we've had some very wet and stormy weather for the last two or three years. Ground's been saturated. The wind has knocked a lot of trees down. There's a lot of stuff laying around all over the place. Several years ago, we had a drought that wouldn't quit and the reservoirs were all down, and if that were the case today, this place would be a tinderbox. What do you think the role of our department ought to be in mitigation for that kind of a situation?
So, I think there's two ways I'm going to answer that. One of them is, it's one of the reasons I believe we're going to look pretty smart having a call department over the next number of years. More events are happening that are regional. Even medical stuff is happening, you know, pandemics and epidemics and stuff like that, but especially on the, you know, weather events. And, you know, we saw what happened in California. We see, you know, bad hurricanes. We see these kinds of things. Not a good time to call mutual aid. Mutual aid's wonderful and we use it and it's great, but when the whole region's having a problem, that's a hard time. Our ability to deploy a bunch of trucks and a bunch of people independently of other towns, I think we're going to look pretty smart. A lot of the other towns rely on mutual aid to be able to do a lot of what they can do. So, there's that. I think a call department is part of the answer. Cisterns is another part of the answer. So, we've gone to cisterns. We're less seasonal in our, in our water supplies. Having a second tanker, if we could have that year-round would be another piece of that. So, we have, we have it, we have one, but it's not, it's seasonal. It's outside. We have to winterize it in the wintertime and mothball it. So, there's a number of pieces to that. I think we've done well with cisterns, the way we've been handling it to add them. I'm not sure that I'd be asking the town for money for that. I might ask the town for money to be able to house our second tanker inside. But, because, you know, as we have more development, that's buying us cisterns. And so, for the town, there are a couple of places that are sore thumbs that we need to- And so for the town, there are a couple of places that are sore thumbs that we need to, we might need to invest. Right now, I'm, I'm not seeing that that's where the town would want to spend their money. I can expand.
Actually, I'm gonna have you explain on that. So, yeah, over the next, I mean, you've, you've basically, you know, being in the fire department for as long as you have, you know, you know, where some of the places of improvement are. So over the next, say, five years or 10 years, you know, where do you see the greatest areas of need for improvement and possibly, you know, maybe capital funding? But, you know, really immediate need and more long-term need and, I guess, in order of how you would address that? And not, you don't have to go into into detail.
Right. So I think, I think part of it will be a discussion with the selectmen and finance and stuff about what the best strategy is. I think if there are, for instance, facilities-wise, we can do a lot of things in an incremental manner, as long as we're committed to continue with increments. If it's, you know, I think often in municipal government, it's, you know, go big or, you know, go big, go once and don't come back. And that, I'm not sure the town's ready for that, right? I'm not sure the town wants a big bang answer. So, you know, if we, if we, when we built that facility, they made provisions for adding a bay when you got a ladder truck. We got a ladder truck and never expanded the station. It's overcrowded. You know, if you add on to it, then you can take some of the existing space, you know, so, you know, that's one increment. Then you turn around, you can use existing space, some of that for, you know, your, your women's facilities and we have more people, more gear, all those kinds of things. So you can start to, like I say, incrementally work your way up on some of that. So there, facilities-wise, there's, there's a number of things. I would have, if we had the space, I would have been in favor of keeping an old ambulance when we got our new one. So having two ambulances, there's, I've been on numbers of calls and, you know, a major call and you're sitting waiting for concord because our ambulances is tied up. It's crazy. We can go for a week and have no calls and then all of a sudden you get three on top of each other. But also anytime, you know, our ambulance has a hiccup for any reason, it's stressful on everybody. We don't, we don't volunteer so that we can come and sit around waiting for somebody else to take care of a problem. So the ability to have, have two, I think, would be something that would be nice, but you kind of have to have the facilities before you can think about that. And at some point, that becomes self-funding. So you were talking about things that it'll cost significant money. Right now, you know, five years, hopefully we don't need any more trucks unless we had a major problem. We have some issues with some of ours that, you know, need to get resolved, but, but that should be part of standard maintenance at this point. Yeah. So our main attack engine at some point will be, you know, but that's probably more than five years. And there are some things like foam and stuff that we probably want to invest in when we do that, but probably not in the next short, short amount of time.
We have a dire need for a rescue boat, don't we?
Right? Sitting in my trailer there because we have no space for it inside right now. The 1950's rowboat.
Okay, Alan.
Probably the most pressing question is, do you think the fire whistle ought to go off at noon or 5:00?
That is, that is an important one. I, I will say that I'm the one who's changed it whenever it's gone back and forth and I've been thanked by many people when it goes to noon. I've only heard one person who likes the 5:00, but that is, that is one of the more important.
Well, I was thrilled when it went back to noon. I was outside and hear.
Oh, I wanted to hear. Yeah.
The amusing part is, we seldom tell the dispatchers when we change it. All of a sudden, I get toned out with a, what's going on?
As a lieutenant, you, you have a lot of responsibilities which are probably as much management as they are leadership, although there's a lot of leadership obviously involved there too. As the boss, you'd have almost primarily leadership requirements. How would you, how would you characterize what those requirements are? What is your, what is your idea of the qualities of a leader?
Okay. So I think one of the things in the fire service that can be interesting is that you can, can end up looking at the fire ground as being your only form or way you do, you look at your leadership. And so that tends to be a very top-down, you know, I said it, you do it kind of leadership. That's not, I don't believe that's always the right answer for all situations. So on the fire ground, you have one type. I tend to be more collaborative in my approach. And so, so the collaboration side of things would be that, one of the things I try to do is mentor people, to try to always be moving people up, to always be, one of the things I, I stress is, especially in a call department, you walk through the door, you don't know what, what your role is gonna be. You have to learn all the roles. And one of the things you need to learn to do is operate at one level higher than what you are. So if you are a auxiliary, you need to be ready to step up and fight a fire in a building because your officer's gonna do that. And when you're a regular, you need to be ready to lead a scene or lead a sector. And when you're an officer, you need to be ready to be battalion chief. I've had to do that, you know, numerous of times, basically run multiple scenes. And, and part of that is the mentorship of, of people to say, you know, when, when you're doing things, when you're making choices, let people know what they were and why you did, why you did it that way, what you should be thinking about because they may be in that situation in the future. So, you know, there's always the, the part of it on the fire ground, you need to be clear. People need to understand what you want, what your goals are. You need to be open to new information and that's one thing that can be, you can get tied into saying, these are my tactics, this is my strategy and not be open to new information and that can be problematic on a fire ground. Things can change. So.
I'm gonna steal one of Luke's questions from last time. And one, you know, so I think from, at least from my perspective on the Board of the Selectmen, part of that relationship with the fire department has been the budgeting process. And the, I, I think one of the things that we, I would be looking for is kind of a little bit of a longer-range plan so that year to year, things weren't a surprise, but also a little bit more detail into kind of like what goes into the budget, you know? I think, you know, we certainly never cut the budget. We've always been very, very supportive of the fire department and, you know, I think basically said, keep hiring and create a financial problem, right? Make, make it a problem because you have so many call firefighters. What is your experience in doing long-range planning and, and kind of strategic vision and in budgeting?
Right. So one of the good or bad things is, it won't be an issue for a couple of years, right? I wouldn't even have the ability to spend this year's budget. Next year's budget is gonna be inked by the time I, before I'm, I'm in. So there'll be some time to, to start pulling some of that together. Most of my budgeting experience has been on projects to, to say, and, and most of it has to do with scalability and contingencies and those kinds of things. So, you know, in terms of municipal budgeting, obviously that's, that's not something that that I've, I've done a lot with. Now, you know, designing things, coming up with what your critical path is, what's, what's the most important thing to be looking at right now, all of that kind of stuff, that's that's second nature. But, but obviously budgeting is something that, or municipal budgeting is something I will be learning. That'll be a challenge for me and it'll be what makes it interesting. You know, I tend to think long-term. That's what I do. So, and I think, I tend to be strategic in how I think. So I'm not real concerned about it, but, but it will be something in terms of, especially the municipal side of it that we.
Yeah, I think, so I think one of the things that we would be looking for is kind of more directed budgeting and, you know, you know, to date, it's kind of been, well, really overspending here because I'm really underspending over here and it, it makes it really hard to understand what the, what the vision and the direction is unless there's, you know, okay, well, this is, this is what I need, you know? If you've been overspending in that category by 200% for three years, maybe money should be moved around, right?
Right. But the other thing, I think, one of this whole process has taught me, I think the, the board and the town need more, need to be more information and to be more educated into what's, what's going on. And I think that'll help everybody out. And I think that, that's, I've been impressed by that. That will be one of my goals and my tasks is to share more information so that it isn't a surprise. And also so that you understand what, you know, I think part of, you talked about things happening in the past. I think some, some of that, they may have had a strategy, but not shared it. And that's.
I'm sure that that's.
Yeah. That's, that doesn't always help, right? So part of it is, is the education and the sharing of it.
Yeah.
So that everybody's on the same page.
Good question.
While you wouldn't be the director of the emergency preparedness, because that's not part of the job description, what role do you see the fire department and yourself playing in helping the director of the emergency preparedness and, and the town in general in that sphere?
Yeah. So I think the people, you know, in the, in, on the department, that's what they want to do. They want to help the town. They want to fill in when there's, when there's a problem. Our DPW's, you know, exceptional at that. It's something you may, you know, whether people see it. But, you know, one of the things I would be more open to is, you know, we have resources. So we have, you know, trucks and chainsaws and stuff. So when something needs to be opened, we can, we can help with some things, you know? Yes, we're still open and on-call and ready to respond, but we can also be doing something and have people on, you know, on staff during a major emergency, taking care of things that may not be straight firefighting and ready to respond if there is a fire or is a, a more safety emergency. But, you know, if a road's closed, that's also a safety issue for us as well. So for us to help with some of those things is, is important. You know, many of the emergency management functions or issues are very fire department-related. They're medical, they're fire, they're safety, and that's what we do. So I would expect, you know, we, we would be working very closely together on those things.
Kerry?
Brian, you're probably the most technically official, competent person on the entire force at this point. I'm sure you've seen opportunities or thought about opportunities to employ technology to be more effective as a department. What, what are some of those things? Have you thought about that? And how would you resist the temptation of doing it yourself rather than delegating it to somebody else?
So there are things that, you know, are pretty obvious of things that we do now. So I, and I let Bert sit, we can figure out who's, who's the most technically capable in the department. But in any case, you know, there are things like, our applications right now really weren't designed for high availability. We could, we could change some of that. We could update and, and make things more robust and high availability and all that for some of the existing things we do. I think one of the more fun things that we could be doing that I think could really help be, the things be less stressful for people is something like a smartphone application. So availability is, is just key to us. Knowing, okay, who's on, what do we, who do we have on right now? Can I go to the grocery store or should I, you know, postpone that? But right now, the way we do it, you know, you're, you're gonna be notified of low staffing situations by being called out. Your heart races, you're ready for a call and all of a sudden they say, can somebody please, you know, make yourself available? That's very intrusive, you know? Changing just to something different would help. Also the ability to, to monitor some of those kinds of things. The ability to say, I know these people were called and these people have acknowledged that they're coming. We assume that if you're called and you're, you're available, you will come. Sometimes things happen that, that technology didn't work and you didn't, you didn't hear it. Well, you know, to know, oh, I'm gonna wait for another 30 seconds or a minute because he said he's coming versus I'm gonna assume that he's not because it's been, you know, six minutes and nobody's here. So, so any of those kinds of things I think can help. One of the things I think we need to do is to, to help with the stress level of always being on-call. You know, it's very freeing when you can put your pager down and people in our department seldom do. There's a lot of dedication. People want to do it. They want to do the right thing, but it's also a stress level that if you can reduce that, I think, I think would really, really help. In terms of doing it myself, I think there are parts of things that I would be inclined to do myself. I think there are things where, places where custom applications make sense for us, making an application fit us versus make us fit the, the workflow of an application that you buy from someplace else. So I'm more likely to be doing that than maybe some other people. I feel like that's part of what a full-time chief can do is to spend some time doing, you know, writing applications or writing, writing things. I would expect to have, you know, a group of people who help do the specification and help with implementation so that, you know, you're not relying on one person. But I think there are other areas, that would be one area where I think I would be unique in, in being able to, to help and, and actually pick, pick up something that maybe isn't being done as much right now. For, there are a lot of other places where I think sharing the load would be good for the department and good for, for other people to, to have an experience of doing things and succeeding at them.
My, my final question, Brian, would be, you spoke about serious headwinds that the department is going to be facing. Could you be a little bit more specific about what you think they are?
Well, I think one of them, and one of the reasons why I think an internal candidate is something we should very strongly consider is the culture change of having, going to a full-time chief. So like I say, culture's key and, and it's very important. Other kinds of, of things, of course, are the headwinds of, of recruiting, the headwinds of having, you know, we're not gonna fill our department with people from the trades anymore. Where we can get them, wonderful. That's great. But that's not, that's not gonna be our, where we're gonna get the, the majority of our people. So that's, it's gonna be a difference. And we need, you know, people, all kinds of people to be in leadership positions, not just, yeah. So, so we have a, a range of people and getting that to, to work together. It can be exceptional when it does, right? You have more, more capabilities. You have more people looking at things from more perspectives. It's great, but it's, it's different and it's something that is a challenge to, to do. I think working with the town, when you educate people, then they have opinions, right? So that's gonna be a challenge, right? That I look forward to, but it's something different than, than some of what we've been doing. You know, and there, there's always the, the challenge of when there's a call and you have, you know, you don't have staffing and, and all of that kind of thing, how do you How, how do you motivate people? How do you resolve your staffing issues in a way that doesn't lose the advantages you do have by the model that we, we have here? So, that's...
We do have more time because we didn't start yet.
Well, I have another question.
I, of course, have more questions.
Probably mine.
Do you, do you see any any gaps that you might have in experience or training or education for moving up to
Right.
a full-time chief?
So, that's, you know, like I say, that's, that's part of why I reached out and, and, you know, went to the Small Chiefs Roundtable and things like that, just to try to find mentors, to try to find people to, to work with. I think, you know, I would expect that Chief Fisher would be a mentor in terms of dealing with Town Hall, dealing with the town and, and things like that. I am not, you know, so when you make me chief, I'm chief. I'm the authority having jurisdiction. I'm chief. That doesn't mean I have all my credentials. I could continue and, and do credentials and I would expect to do that. I've taken a lot of courses at the National, at the Fire Academy. I would continue to do that. A lot of their management courses have to do, I, I have found a lot of them have more to do with, you know, how you deal with unions and things like that. Then, I've taken some courses from the National Fire Academy that I thought were spectacular. So, you know, where I would get the courses and where I would, would fill in my gaps, you know, we'd have to see. But, um, but the opportunities are there. And so, I, I would expect to, to continue on. You know, in terms of just the straight credentialing, there's a, there's a point system. And I've looked through that and, you know, I have a lot of points. You know, a lot of what I've already done counts. And so, you fill in the, the, the other parts. There's also some, you know, whole series that you can go through. National Fire Academy has one that's a, a two-year program. That's basically a master's degree. And, and that would be an option if, you know, there, you have to take, you know, disappear for two weeks at a time or, you know, various times during the year to, to do that. And if that's something that would work out, that would be an option.
So, you know, in, in, so I've been meeting a lot, I've been meeting a lot with David over the last couple of years. And, and what I realized in doing that is how little I knew. And, and I still know little about it because it is so complex and it is such, it, it's really such a great team that's dealing with very, very complex and, and very, very dangerous situations. But, I can imagine that one of the things of, of being a call Fire Department, I don't know if it's a call Fire Department, unique to Carlisle. But, there, there must be a difference in the way that you would, you know, people who are, you know, CEOs and, you know, own their own companies and, you know, you know, you know, leaders who are coming because they want to be there. And there must be a difference in how you lead a group like that in a day-to-day situation and how you command a group like that during an incident. And how do you walk that line and, and how do you deal with that?
So, there's two pieces to that. One of them is just the kind of people we get. So, again, knowing your demographics. So, you know, many, many departments would look for 20-year-olds, people in their twenties, to make firefighters out of them. And, you know, they have the phrase, you know, we didn't come to you, you came to us. So, you're going to, you're going to fit into us, you know. And, and we're going to tell you how you're going to become a firefighter and, and you're going to go through that. We have to do things a little bit differently here, right? We have people who are very accomplished, very good at what they do, come to us. And we need to make a team out of them, which is different than taking a 20-year-old, making a firefighter out of them. It's a very different approach. So, so I would say that, that we need to, to understand that. And the question had two parts to it. That was one of them. And the other one was...
There's, there's kind of like the day-to-day management, team orientation, and then there's the command.
Right. And so, that's where, you know, to me, the difference between, you know, on the fire ground, when I tell you, this is what you need to do, you need to do that or tell me you can't. Whereas, I'm very collaborative in my day-to-day. I mean, I think if you ask anybody, they, they would say that. I'm very open. I'm very collaborative. I appreciate the fact that there are people on the department that may not know more than me about something. I've been in work environments where I am leading teams where people are, have expertise better than mine. They have found that they can even work through problems with me that they don't know the, the answer to. They feed me, they whatever, and I help them, them find the answer to their problem that they didn't know they, they, what it was before they started. The ability to work with people who know more than I do, the ability to let other people shine is something that I'm happy to do. And I think that's something that will be key to the success of a department like Carlisle.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions before I ask the final?
There, there are advantages to being an in-house candidate and there are disadvantages to being an in-house candidate. One of which is maybe in the command situation where, you know, my buddy Brian wants me to do this. So, I guess maybe, maybe I will, maybe I won't. We'll see. How do you handle that?
I tend to lead by example. I tend to, I tend not to demand respect. I tend to, tend to earn it. I think people like to work for me. They like to do what I'm asking them to do. I have had, you know, situations, I know how to yell and scream, I mean, when we have to. And it's to get a job done. And everybody understands that. And it's not personal. Right? I, I don't, I don't get after them in a personal way. It's just, this needs to happen and this needs to happen now. And this is what we're doing. And I don't scream much, but I will, you know, let people know this is, this, we, we need to be doing something at a certain time. I don't think people take, take offense at it. And if they did, you know, that's part of, that's part of, welcome to the Carlisle Fire Department. And that's, that's like on a fire ground. You can't, you can't take things too personally.
Anybody else have any others? Okay.
Brian?
Yes.
What criteria would you expect to be evaluated on?
I think recruitment and retention is key. That's a hard thing to say when you understand that, you know, we're going to be having a lot of retirements and, and recruitment is always going to be a challenge. But, but I think recruitment can, it can, it is key. I think ability to cover calls, I think, outcome. So, we've, we've always had a very good outcome here. Our department has, has been very effective. That's something we can be very proud of. Our members are, are, are good at what they do. We're a good team. We're good at doing teamwork. I think one of the things, it's hard for me to, to say I'm going to be able to do, but I, I'd like to look at things like what it would take to improve our ISO rating. Would be the kind of thing that a selectman, I think, would be interested in. You know, selectmen and chief have to work through those things. And ISO, meaning the, the insurance rating for your, your fire insurance. Our town has a rating. If we could improve that, it would help the town in terms of lowering their, their taxes. It may require some investment from, from the town to be able to do that. So, if the, the town would decide that that was something important to them, then that would be something that you would, you would rate me on. Because there's a lot of, of compliance and administrative side to improving that, as well as just capabilities. So, it's, it's very much like, like an audit would be in, in the worlds you and I come from.
Any other questions? Okay, so the final question is, could you give us your 30 or 60 second elevator speech as to why we should hire you as Carlisle's Fire Chief?
So, I think, I think a call department is, is best for Carlisle. I've been exposed to other departments. I've talked to leaders of other departments, the Fire Academy and stuff. I've become convinced that my skills and knowledge here of this department and this town would be most likely to result in a successful call department. I think I enjoy mentoring. I enjoy helping my neighbors. I have a lot of the administrative skills that a chief requires. I think the department is in a lot better shape than it was a few years ago. I, I think I had a part in, in shaping a positive culture. I think we can continue in that direction. I would hate to see us go backwards. We have a lot of challenges ahead. I'm very optimistic that with the support of the members of the department, selectmen, the town, that I'm very optimistic we can, we can actually succeed and have any, be an even better town asset than we are now.
Thank you. So, before you go, if you don't mind just staying there because
Yep, that's good.
I think everybody's going to want to get up and move around. So, I just want to talk about kind of like the next steps for tonight. And, and then we'll say goodbye. So, uh, you know, we are going to, if, if anybody wants to get up and just make a statement, you know, you're welcome to. As I said at the beginning, we will be doing that. We're not going to be deciding tonight because understanding that, you know, some people may be watching on TV or some people may not feel comfortable in public speaking. We will be, you know, you can send it to myself or Tim or both of us and we'll distribute it. We will be, you know, you, you, feel free to email your comments and then we will consider them when we, when we do the full deliberation on Tuesday night. So, that's, that's when we will be doing the final, the final discussion. So, if you want to stay around and just listen to any comments, you're welcome to. If you want to go home and just email us a comment, you're welcome to. But, we are just going to kind of transition into it as quickly as we can. But first, we're going to say thank you and goodbye to Brian. All right, thank you.
We need a little break.
I'm just going to run there and grab somewhere to break. Anybody need water?
You've been working too long.
I have, but...
I thought we'd transition right into it, but Luke.
Blaming me? Come on. Just getting a drink. Maybe I'll get two. Not like you haven't had discussion without me before.
I think you prefer. Okay, so we'll just open it right up. If anybody would like to make any public comment, please come up to the podium here, state your name and address and then, yes.
Is the green light on?
Is it? It is.
Okay.
Hi, George Middleton, 160 Weston Ave, Lowell, Mass. My name's George Middleton. I've been a member of the Carlisle Fire Department 27 years now. And first, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen and the working group for working so hard to, you know, try to get through this whole thing. And the other thing I wanted to say publicly, thank you to interim chief Bert Rubenstein. And, um, his incredible devotion and leadership during this transitional time following the retirements of Chief Slattery and Deputy Chief White. And I want to thank also the other officers, the interim deputy chief, Robert Koning, and Captain Matthews Fatac, who's not here tonight. And, of course, Lieutenant Brian Sarrows. And all of them have just been working their butts off, trying to make a smooth transition with this whole thing. And also, the, the two newly retired chiefs have been helping out pretty good, too. So, I, I think it's a big thank you to all of them for what they've been doing. And I just want to say a few words. Now that you're about to choose one of the two finalists now, I just want to say something about the unique nature of our profession, our particular organization, and the importance of the choice you're about to make. For most firefighters and EMTs, whether they're full-time or call or volunteer, this profession is not just a job. It's a calling. Okay? In the best and the highest definition of the word. The opportunity to serve the public and our community in this fashion is not only a critical responsibility, it's also a sacred trust, okay? And an incredible honor and privilege. And if you look at jobs that are available in the workplace, it's one of the most sought-after jobs you can imagine. When there's a, a opening in a, in a, a department in town, whether it be full-time or call, there's usually hundreds, if not thousands, of applicants for that job. Depends where it is, okay? And probably the primary reason, I think, in my opinion, for that is because it offers a person an opportunity on a daily basis to exercise, like, the highest values, really, of human nature on a daily basis. Our members operate within, within a unique environment of daily risk and danger and with, within a culture of purpose, commitment, sacrifice, and esprit de corps. Furthermore, the job description of a firefighter or EMT today is one of increasing complexity and requirements for a vast amount of specialized knowledge and skills. We train constantly to meet those demands. For these reasons, we have a huge pride in what we do and are naturally a close-knit bunch of folks. Many of us are longtime friends, neighbors, and colleagues in other jobs. We care about each other and watch out for each other. Indeed, we're like a family. Our organization is grounded in the commitment and sacrifice, really, of whole families. When someone becomes a member of the Fire Department, it's not just the individual. It's the spouses, the significant, significant others and, and the children who really ultimately make a sacrifice and a commitment to a, a very particular way of life. Our members devote considerable extra time above and beyond what they are paid towards the many tasks and activities that constitute the daily life of the Fire Department and its involvement with the community. The decision to create a full-time chief officer position is a watershed event in the history of our department. For a first time, we'll have a full-time member, okay? This change by itself is very significant and has the potential to impact the Carlisle Fire Department in a positive or a negative way. We will now become what is known as a combination department, okay? This will add additional complexity and challenges for our leadership and membership in maintaining and fostering the future health of the Fire Department. History has shown that transition to a combination Fire Department can be a rocky road and result in fundamental changes to the organization, which are not always positive. Differing agendas and competing interests can cause a, a loss of group cohesion, the degradation of the call or the volunteer component, and a general decline in morale, all right? All of this, of course, affects job performance and the quality of the services rendered. So, because of these challenges and conditions, in my opinion, Brian Sarrows is uniquely qualified among the two finalists. I've known and worked with Brian for the past 18 years in addition to his considerable knowledge, his skills and experience as a firefighter and as an EMT and a company officer. Brian is intensely devoted to both the Fire Department as an institution and to its members, okay? He's always striving to improve his own skills and knowledge and has demonstrated time and time again a willingness to learn about and deal with any and all of the issues and intricacies involved in the day-to-day functioning of the Carlisle Fire Department. Like many paid call or volunteer Fire Departments, our members represent a diverse array of professions and bring many unique individual skills to the job. Brian understands the value of this collective expertise and appreciates and encourages the contributions that each and every member can make to the team effort, whether they're... are new or seasoned veterans. He's also very involved and well-known in the community of Carlisle and has shown a keen appreciation in his actions for the value of positive public relations within the community and in the fostering and improvement of Fire Department's relation, relationships with the other emergency service agencies in the town and within the town government. Because of his lengthy service, Brian brings the perspective of the department's modern history to what I believe is a well-developed and positive vision for the success of the Fire Department going forward. Indeed, I feel his efforts are always geared towards improving the professionalism, the functionality, and the esprit de corps culture of the Carlisle Fire Department. So because of the reasons I stated above and after listening to him tonight, I certainly believe he would be the best choice for our next chief from within our own ranks, has been, has been the case throughout the 90-year history of the Carlisle Fire Department. I believe Brian's best qualified amongst the finalists to serve in that capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Would anybody else like to get up and make a public comment? Nobody else?
Yes. Jay.
Good evening, I'm Jay Looby, Woodbine Road. I'll be brief. First, I'd like to thank the selectmen. I thought you asked a lot of good questions and I appreciate your work along with Tim's in this whole process. I also would like to share or echo the comments made earlier. I think Bert's done a fantastic job in this interim phase and most people in town aren't aware of all he's been doing. So, I, and I'm also very appreciative of the officers, other fire personnel. Having lived here for a long time, we know you just do incredible work and we're very fortunate. So thank you. I guess I'd like to suggest that, again, credit to your team, we have two very highly qualified candidates that, I think they both came across very well to me, very highly experienced, highly skilled. Nathan, you talked about the complexities of the Fire Department. To me, that brings home the key differentiator that if I were in your shoes, I'd have to assess, and that is, do you, do you choose someone that is a known entity, has been here 18 years, has proven himself time and again being very valuable versus taking a chance on someone who comes across to me as very talented, very qualified? But there's a huge risk there and to me at least, it creates a very high threshold. Why would Carlisle want to take that risk of going with someone we don't know much about versus someone for 18 years we've seen time and again prove his merit? So I hope that that will be a key decision-maker for you and to me, like the, my preceding commentator, it's a very clear vote in favor of Brian Sarrows. Thanks.
Thank you, Jay. Yes.
Hi, John Richardson, Westford Street. I'm also in favor of Brian. I mean, Colin Shea seems like a really nice guy, I liked him. But just to elaborate on some of the things Brian said about himself, he talked about trying to, you know, bring some mentorship to the Fire Department. That's definitely been my experience of him. I've only been on for about six years. Brian, we didn't officially have, you know, individual development plans for everybody, but Brian always had a development plan for everybody. He encouraged me to go to the academy, he's one of the guys who comes out every Sunday to do pump training. I don't believe he even gets paid for that, but he and Doug Stevenson have been doing a ton of that kind of work. Brian also mentioned that he tries to lead by example and that I've definitely seen true of him. You know, every year for the chicken barbecue, the last guy who leaves when you're done cleaning up is almost always Brian and Molly together. And you see him doing that kind of stuff all the time and not only in the Fire Department, you see him doing it all kinds of ways in the Fire Department. He's one of the main people who keeps, along with Lieutenant Koning, keeps, or sorry, Deputy Chief Koning, keeps, you know, the trucks repaired and all of our equipment working. So I think that's very true of him as well. Lastly, you mentioned, I forget it was, maybe it was Kerry, sure, he's friendly and gets along with everybody, but on the fire ground, can he, you know, be a leader of men and instill obedience? And that's a really interesting one because he is very, you know, kind of down-to-earth and approachable and if you're seeing him, if I'm talking to him at the Fire Department, I'm happy to tell him, you know, he's full of baloney, he's wrong about whatever. On the fire ground, it's a different thing. Now, I should say, this is, I think, true of not only all of our officers, but all the firefighters. If one of my officers gives me an order on the fire ground, that is the voice of God and I'm going to do it. But that's true of Brian as well. Just this fire we had on Lowell Street just a couple of months ago, you know, I was really excited, I'd just gotten out of the Fire Academy, it's a big structure fire, I want to be in the crew that goes through the door first. Brian pulls me aside and says, "Hey, you're coming with me in the ladder truck." And in a way, it kind of broke my heart, but he's the officer, he's telling me what to do, so that's what I'm going to do. I don't think you have a problem there. Instead, Ryan got to go in first and I'm still bitter about that. But, you know, again, thank you very much for all your work and I know that Mr. Shea is a very good candidate as well, but I'm in favor of Brian. Thanks.
Would anybody else like to? Okay, I don't see anybody else. So please feel free to email Tim or I or both Tim and I, it's actually better if you do both of us or just Tim because then we'll make sure it gets to everybody. And we'll be getting back together again on Tuesday and deliberating. So, thank you.
Is that meeting on Tuesdays, that's not open, right?
It is. It is. It's the regular Board of Select meeting. This, this we dedicated just to the interview process. On Tuesday, it's the regular Board of Select meeting and this will be one of the agenda items.
One of them, but you don't know which.
I don't know, I don't know which one yet, yeah. Okay. Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Show move.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Lewis, aye.
Red, aye.
Brown, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Lewis, aye.